Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwier?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent, and Mayor Mongi?
Here.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwier?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Nordby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you much. Mr. Randall, toppings?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple presentations, or one presentation tonight. First up will be with Andrus Bilt, and we got Doug and Tracy here to discuss. Kick it off with you, Brandy.
Sure, this presentation is on the recommendation of city council from back in December. If you recall, we had a couple of developers that were interested in purchasing the site at Seventeenth Avenue in Delaware, and you would ask that both of those developers present to the planning commission to get their recommendation. Planning commission held that meeting on February, or sorry, January 7th, I believe it was, and we only had one present at that point in time, and the other developer has since pulled out. And so we have Andrus here tonight to present, and the planning commission did recommend that we move forward with this developer. So I would ask them to present if they would like, or if you would like, but they are here to answer any questions on their development project.
Yes, please.
It's in their packet, I can pull it up on my computer as well.
Welcome back, gentlemen.
Yeah. Thank you. Nothing's really changed since the last time we were here.
I just asked that, has anything changed since the last time you were here?
No, so instead of going through it again, do you have any questions for us? Anybody?
Same number of builds?
Yeah, it'd be ten units, five twin homes.
Okay.
Three on Seventeenth, two on Delaware.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a, you, it's kind of like a roundabout, you, like Cary Lane, right?
Cary Lane is a cul-de-sac.
The cul, yes, sorry, is that kind of what the setup was? I can't recall. The one on Seventeenth and Delaware.
No, she was in the existing roads.
Oh, okay.
The driveways come off on Seventeenth and Delaware.
Fantastic.
So there's two proposals in the packet, one is the ten units facing Delaware, you know, between Delaware and Seventeenth, and the other one was, I think, an older sketch that showed eight homes with a cul-de-sac back in the, in the back end of it.
We did two or three other sketches to try to get this to work properly, and it just doesn't work doing it the other way. Putting a road in is just way too expensive for what you're getting. That's where we're falling back on this design.
On the ten?
Right, just the ten. Because you're only picking up two more homes and putting in all the cost involved in doing a road like that is quite a bit.
Yeah, I like the drawings, they look like the ones you have over already at Cary, right? As far as the design?
Yeah, they're going to be pretty similar, actually, they're just going to be a little narrower, maybe a little longer, just because the lots are a little different, you know, but basically the same inside, almost the layout and everything. And again, we've had eighteen of them there, and we only have four left. We just opened our model again last week, which was a good day to do it, nobody showed up.
Yeah.
But we'll have no problem getting rid of these other four.
And you had full basements in the ones over here?
Right.
Which I like, too, because you, like you said at one of your other presentations, you have to dig anyways, you might as well finish up the basement.
And there's not a lot of savings, people think there is, but there really isn't a lot of savings when you go to a slab. You know, you got a whole different heating system, you got to put in a separate air conditioning system. You know, you weigh it out, and it's like, I don't know, people appreciate the storage, most people have a lot of junk like I do.
Well, they're downsizing, probably, going from single, you know, two-story home down to single level, so great.
What are plans with the big chunk of land in back? We going to put in a community swimming pool for council?
Part of it will be a pond, because we're over an acre, so we're going to have to put a pond down there. They, I already checked into it, they consider the whole development, even if you only develop a half acre, it's a two-and-a-half acre piece, that's over an acre.
Interesting.
Watershed gets involved, they're going to want a pond.
Okay.
Just for the drainage of lots that we have there. So that'll take up a pretty good chunk right there as it is, you know.
And then maintenance of the area back there, HOA type of a?
Yeah, because it'll all be HOA, so they can cut the grass, plant gardens, do whatever they want back there, you know.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Like to have a little spot to throw up two tomatoes in the ground?
Sure, why not?
All right, I've stretched my end out next.
I think it looks great.
We're going to put you on the list, Tim.
I think your plans look great.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. Today's a good day, get out there. Yep.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks for, thank you.
Thanks for your patience, and thanks for your dedication in North St. Paul, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is the fee schedule amendment, I'll turn that back over to Brandy Howe, our community development director.
Thanks, Brian. I'd like you all to take, remember back to December when we adopted the 2024 fee schedule. At that time, the city council approved a number of updates to the fees, including those associated with building permits. Since then, there has been some public comments that have raised questions about those fees. Staff looked into the question and came to the conclusion that there was a communication error that resulted in higher fees than what was intended. And making our recommendation for the 2024 permit fees, staff utilized Rum River, our new consultant, their recommended fee schedule for municipalities. Under that, under our contract with Rum River, they collect seventy-five percent of permit fees, while the city retains twenty-five percent of the administrative costs, which is a similar ratio to what we had with our under, other contract with Minspect. So in, in looking at that recommended fee schedule, it was our assumption that those fees listed in their recommendation did not include the city's twenty-five percent share, and thus we raised those fees accordingly when it was presented to you back in December. We've since confirmed that the assumption was an error, and we have provided an amendment that would reduce those costs by twenty-five percent and would basically match the adopted, sorry, would match the recommended fee schedule as provided by Rum River. So that was the item, item one out of three. Additionally, staff has been asked to clarify questions raised by council at the last meeting by the general public. We were asked to provide a apples-to-apples comparison of the 2023 versus the 2024 permit fees for building permits. The analysis is included in your council packet. In completing that exercise, we found that in most cases, the customer will pay less for building permits, with the exception being residential plumbing permits that are not associated with a specific new build project. And the last item related to the fee schedule amendment that I wanted to bring to your attention is related to special event permits. When you looked at the fee schedule in November, that fee was raised from zero to eighty dollars without adequate explanation provided to you, and that was a procedural error due to the lack of clarity in the 2023 fee schedule. So in looking at that a little closer, we find that we require this fee based on Chapter 122 of our municipal code, special permit fees, sorry, special event permits are required for outdoor privately sponsored events that are open to the public and held on public or privately owned property. Exceptions to this requirement include nonprofit organizations, religious institutions, family gatherings, and garage sales. So we are recommending that, I'm sorry, the process for review of special event permits requires those applicants be reviewed by police, fire, and public work staff for public safety considerations. So given the administrative requirements and the staff review required, we recommend that we go ahead and keep that eighty dollars that it was recommended and approved back at the 2024 fee schedule, but we wanted to give you an opportunity to, to realize and hear that that fee was changed without adequate information to provide at that time. So I'll take any questions that you might have about the fee schedule. If none, this will be posted on the website as an ordinance amendment and for ten days in advance of the next city council meeting, which would be February 6th.
I had a couple.
Sure.
Are these fees? Are we able to negotiate a couple of them? The fee for water heaters is up considerably from what it was prior?
Our consultant with the building official is here, I would defer that question to her. This is Carrie with Rum River.
I'm trying to find the old price, but I think it was between eighty and a hundred dollars in this one, if I remember right, it's like a hundred and eighty-five?
For water heater?
For water heater. We're going to have a lot of people, in my opinion, we'll have a lot of people just put water heaters in on their own and not pull a permit to do it right, that's my concern.
Understandable, I appreciate the question, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Again, my name's Carrie Lovitzky, I'm with Rum River Consultants, I'm their project administrator. Great question. The fees, it's, when it comes to permit fees, it's a really big conversation. And a lot of times, fees, some fees are subsidized for others. And the way we approach it is that development should pay for itself. Therefore, a fee that maybe you are only charging fifty-five dollars for, that doesn't pay for the cost of our service. But then if you pay, if you charge a really high amount for, say, a new construction mechanical, which is what was going on previously, that four-hundred-dollar permit is subsidizing the fifty-dollar permit for the water heater. And I'm happy to go into a little bit more detail or get more granular, but your previous contracted inspector, they were not covering their costs on that fifty-five-dollar permit. But from an optic standpoint of the general public, fifty-five dollars is palatable, and a mechanical or plumbing contractor that's obtaining a permit is just taking that cost and passing it on to the general contractor. So they don't bat an eye at those extremely high costs when you're charging four and five hundred dollars for a plumbing or mechanical permit on a new construction home. We do flat fees for new construction and for replacement, and as you can see, they're a little bit more comparable because that's the actual cost that it, that our company, it costs our company to provide that service. So the fee structure that you have in 2023, you've got those bigger commercial projects and things like that, that's, and higher residential, that's paying or help subsidizing the cost of doing the inspections for those water softeners and water conditioning systems and water heaters. Same thing with mechanical, before it was a flat fee and then a per fixture along with per gas line. So again, from an optic standpoint, you're looking at those fees and you see fifty dollars and twelve dollars and adding them up, but then you have to include the gas line and all of those items as well. So as far as to your question, Councilmember Cole, on whether or not we can negotiate, everything's, everything's on the table for negotiation, I just thought that that might help to provide a little bit further explanation on why there is a difference in that particular fee.
And, and thank you, and Brandy, thank you, the side-by-side is way easier to read than what we had before, so I appreciate the time, energy, and effort that went into it. Because there was, I just looked at the, you know, furnace went from eighty to one-twenty-five, air conditioner went from eighty to one-twenty-five, air exchanger went from sixty-five to one-twenty-five, garage heater went from eighty-five to one-twenty-five, you know, bathroom fan went from, I don't even know what it was, thirty-two dollars each to one-twenty-five. I mean, I understand new construction, a lot of these are replacement for existing homeowners. And to me, these, these look like they're excessive increases from what they've been used to paying. And I, I understand, I understand the margin balancing completely. I just think it looks really high, and I, my fear is it will discourage people from doing the right thing, just based on the new fee structure.
So by the looks of that, it's pretty much a hundred and twenty-five bucks to roll a truck for you guys, that's it?
Correct.
Nothing less than that.
Well, seventy-five cent, seventy-five percent off of the one-twenty-five.
Correct.
That is correct. And when it comes to those fixture permits, as far as the sixty-five for some and eighty for another, we're not sure why that calculation, because the inspections are very similar as far as the amount of trips out and what it is that we're doing, how long we're out there. So again, I think that's just another way of.
I'm sure it was the same thing, a way to balance a few things, but, I mean, we've entered into an agreement with you. I just, I looked at, now that I have a true side-by-side comparison, none of them, a lot of the stuff didn't jump out except the existing residents who have, you know, you know, need to replace a furnace, need to replace a water heater. You know, I think a water heater, I don't know, thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. So we're at ten percent of the cost. So that's, that was, that was my only question, is what can be negotiated.
In regards, and I'm not sure if this was shared to you, if I was reading it right, I received an email from a resident earlier, and one of the questions was, do these fees include taxes? And whether or not?
I don't think so, because we're a tax-exempt entity, I don't think we charge tax.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further with that, Brandy, are we done?
That is all I have, if no further questions or any further direction, this fee schedule as presented will be provided again for official adoption at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you?
Tim? I'd still like to see the fees come down. On some of the, on some of those, I mean, I think some of them are excessive. But I'm only one opinion up here.
I could suggest an alternative. We do keep twenty-five percent of that fee for administrative purposes, and it's my understanding that the amount of administration that goes into these over-the-counter permit fees is probably a lot less than others. So if we were to just cut those down by twenty-five percent, they might be a solution, which would bring it down to about ninety-four dollars.
And I would suggest the provider bring their fees down, not the city.
I'm sorry, say that one.
I would suggest that the contractor bring their fees down, not the city bring their fees down, we still have bills to pay.
That is something that we can discuss with the contractor offline.
So that was the way it was before this started, the, a commercial absorbs some of the residential cost, even though at the very end, maybe the numbers are the same, but it was the commercial that paid a little more and the residential was lower, is that correct?
And some of the residential that have the higher fees, such as mechanical, that was being charged per fee, or per fixture and per gas line. So they were able to run up some of those fees on those permits. And then that would help offset what they're not.
Can you come up, yeah, because I'm trying to, so you're saying even for residential, they may have three different things with two different gas pipes or something? So then that would be, because if I just want a water heater, I'm just one permit, you know, pulling a water heater, there's just the one thing. But when you say multiple for residential, what do you mean by that?
Could I, could I jump in?
So if you want to turn to page?
I just want to bring up something that I know that you'll be able to address far better than me. The statutory requirement that the fees be commensurate with the services provided?
Correct, for the, yes, that is correct. So in state statute, it indicates for all permit fees need to be commensurate with the service that's provided. Not service provided to the overall jurisdiction, but the service that's provided to that individual permit. And so if you look on page six of nine in the packet that Ms. Howe prepared for you, you can see for, for example, the plumbing permit fees and the mechanical permit fees for the 2105 Cary Lane. The 2023 cost or min specs was one ninety fifty, and ours would have been one twelve fifty. And then for mechanical, it was three oh three seventy-five, and ours would have been one twelve fifty. So what I'm referring to is those fees are higher, it does not cost that much. The fee is not commensurate with the service provided because it doesn't cost us that much to perform and provide that service to the individual that pulled that specific permit.
So that's what I'm trying to get to, it sounds like it's, you need to be in right for each person, you can't just at the end say, okay, this covers that, because it's a loss leader of this, we cover it by that, and that's not within state reg statutes, there was an issue with that before?
Correct, and, and I'm a property owner as well, so I understand that as far as if I'm replacing a furnace, it might be ten percent of the cost of me, or, excuse me, water softener, it might be ten percent of the cost of installation. The cities of Corcoran and Dayton are the most recent cases that have gone through district court, and they've gotten into a lot of trouble by doing some of the things that, where they're running up costs on other permits and not, and having other, so like a new, the examples that I gave you, those costs are a lot higher. Where a furnace replacement is lower, and that's not commensurate with the service provided for each of those individual permits.
So can we even compare apples-to-apples with what we had before? It sounds like what, what was before was not under, correct under state statute, is that what you're saying?
I would, I'm not an attorney, I would defer that to your council, but I can tell you from my experience, I, and I've been doing this for a long time, I won't date myself, but Mr. Schrader, the owner of the company, myself are actually teaching a fees class at the annual institute for building officials coming up in February. And I've done a lot of research and worked with a lot of city attorneys to get the fee recommendation schedule where it is now and what's being provided to you all for your consideration, along with the Department of Labor and Industry. So they have also reviewed our recommendation because of these most current cases, as far as with Corcoran and Dayton, and they're very comfortable with the way we've laid out those fees.
So the other cities you do are similar to what we're doing with ours right now. The hundred and twenty-five is pretty much the minimum, and then you work your way, so this is, this is kind of a boilerplate for other cities, is what you're saying?
Correct, all of them, except for one, they are still basing their roofing and siding and window replacements off of valuation. But again, when you're issuing one of those permits at a five-hundred-dollar fee, it's, from our perspective, the individual pulling the permit is not, is, the cost of that permit is not the cost of the service that's being provided, and that's why we recommend those flat fees.
Did that answer any?
I guess I'll agree to disagree, I look at the fee structure on Cary Lane for the mechanical permits, and under the twenty-three fees there, line by line by line, everything came off of the top side. So sixty-five dollars for an air conditioner, sixty-five dollars for bathroom kitchen fan, ductwork, et cetera, all the way down. Where we go over the 2024 fees, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars and everything is inclusive. Again, that, that's a mechanical new construction that doesn't address my existing resident who has something they want to replace.
A good example, Councilmember Cole, is if you turn to page seven, from a homeowner's perspective and not a new construction, so we can do a little bit more apples-to-apples, on that page towards the bottom is the roofing and siding examples. I don't know the number offhand, how many roofing and siding permits were issued in North St. Paul last year?
About every house.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Just about every house.
Right, and so this is a very good representation of what I was trying to articulate a few minutes ago. If you look at the costs, a homeowner doing the roofing or siding themselves in 2023, that building permit would have been four hundred and eighteen dollars, and under our costs, it would have been a.
The homeowner fee was five eighty-five.
Okay, gotcha. And so it's one, if you're just doing your roof, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Where in 2023, if you're just doing your roof, it's value-based, and it could potentially be four hundred dollars for that permit. Because roofs and siding right now is very expensive, very expensive. You're into the twenties, in between twenty and thirty thousand to re-roof your house or do some re-siding work. And because they were value-based, those permit fees were extremely expensive for what amounts to one to two inspections. And that's not commensurate with the service that's provided. So I definitely understand your concern about those water softeners, but if you look at those roofing and sidings, which it's a lot more common and a lot more are issued, those residents are, are being asked to pay a lot less under our contract than they were previously.
So we're still going to charge for a fan inspection a hundred and twenty-five dollars regardless? Even, but then you're looking at your roofing and siding, which is a flat fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, so the, the fan in and of itself, if someone replaces a fan in their bathroom, we, nineteen ninety-six, that's how long I've been issuing permits for, and I have never issued in that many years a permit for just a fan. Typically, if someone's doing a base, some sort of a bathroom remodel, right? They're, they're pulling and obtaining those permits all at one time. And so, again, say for a basement finish, if someone's putting in a bathroom, under your current fees, it's a specific amount for, it's based on value, which ours is too. But then we say, we're not charging any more than five hundred dollars for a basement finish, and if you're the homeowner and you're doing the plumbing and mechanical and all of that together by yourself, all of that is included in that main permit, where everything prior to our contract was pieced together and added up, which added up to be a lot of money because they're all individual fixtures. So if you're going to do just a fan in your bathroom, do you need a permit? Yeah, I've never issued one just for a fan. And I haven't in the two years here that I've been with Rum River, and we have twenty jurisdictions, full-service jurisdictions. I just don't see that being very common.
And that was just an example, I mean, it's, what about a water heater?
Yes, water heater, it's, it's the hundred and twenty-five dollars because it costs us that to provide that service, so it's commensurate. But charging four hundred dollars for a roofing permit is not. And that's where we're transparent with what it costs, and we don't subsidize our permit fees or our recommended, our recommended permit fees, ultimately, it's up to the city council to set your fees. And our contract is seventy-five and twenty-five, and you also get the service of us advising on what is best practices.
And that's kind of the industry I came from with phones, it was an hour and a trip just to be there five minutes or to be there one hour. So that's kind of where I was asking, you know, these specific questions, if you're taken from here and, you know, subsidizing internally, but if that wasn't a proper practice going for that time, then it's, we just have to understand that. And I appreciate Councilmember Cole, we have everybody here right now, what's going to happen is we're going to go back to it, and it's going to be two weeks, if we have a few minutes, if we can, you know, just kind of discuss, I really appreciate everybody talking about it, then we can figure out from there, but at least get, as long as we got everybody in the room, let's try to see if we can try to get a little bit farther ahead where we are.
I'd like to discuss Brandy's option a little bit more. Although I a hundred percent agree with Councilmember Cole that the city has bills that need to be paid. The way I understand it is, the city would be getting more right now for a water heater permit than the city did in the past for a water heater permit. So if we don't need, and I don't believe it would cost the city. would cost the city any more man hours than it did prior to 2023. So for the over the counter permits that are just basically a stamp of approval, possibly reducing that city percentage, because in the grand scheme of things, the city would be taking the same amount of money. I, I, I would be open to that discussion. I think that's a, a fair.
With the min spec, we got 25% from them too as well, right? That, that rate hasn't changed. The city gets the same amount compared to, between the two here? Is that, are cuts the same between both of them?
That's correct.
So there's nothing changing. On their side, they get more because of the way they, their model with the trip and things like that. They're doing that, but we're getting the same amount either direction from last year to this year of the 25%.
Yes, the, the breakdown is 75, 25. That remains the same. Yep.
But in past years, it would have been 25% on $62 for a water heater, is the way I look at it. This year, it'll be 25% of 125. So the city would be getting more money for that water heater permit than this year than we did last year. Is that an accurate statement?
I believe so.
Would I, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry. I, I would just look back to the two examples that were laid out, one on, in our packet, one on page 18 of 44, where it says that the city's share under 2023 fees would be $151 for a roof redo. And under 2024 fees, the city would get $87. You go back to the same new construction build on Cary Lane, the 2023, the city's portion would be $116. 2024, the city's portion would be $52. So both examples that were put in this packet cut the city's amount in half.
I think that brings us back to the statutory issue where we were charging for items that potentially were not commensurate with services. And so I think, assuming that the recommendation that is provided by our new consultant is accurate, we're close, more closely in line with, with state regulations by modifying our fees as such as presented.
So we're fixing an issue besides changing fees? Then we're fixing a problem that...
That's my, my perspective.
That's where, you do the research. That's why I want to make sure. Because that's where, you know, if there was something where we weren't in accordance with the old one...
I, I'm not an expert in, in building and inspection fees. But I, I have been a consultant, as, as have you. And I do know the cost that it takes to drive from point A to point B and how much hourly rates can be. And to me, $125 for a permit fee seems appropriate when you think of it in those terms. To Councilmember Cole's point, it is twice as much as it would have been under the 2023 contract. So that is a hard pill to swallow for some individuals. So I think this is a challenge to, to weigh these two options. But I think that we're overall going to be put in a better position than we were previously. And we are moving it towards a place where we're more closely in line with, with state rules.
And I also think it's important to point out that that $65 for the mechanical fee, that does not include any gas line work. So I would, I'd be interested in seeing how many permits actually went across the counter at only $65 versus 65 plus the additional fees that would have been added on to that. So if you look at it just line item, you are correct. It is, it is twice as much. But on those permits, typically there's the gas line fee, which is an additional 3250 per gas line? That doesn't sound right. It might be. So that fee would have been added on to that permit. I'd have to look in OpenGov and I certainly can do that if you'd, if you'd like me to, as far as what some of those permits were. But Councilmember Cole, I do understand what you're saying. But I wa, I do want to point out that $65 is just for that fixture, not for the permit, not for the complete permit.
The, I was looking at the fee schedule, $65 minimum for the gas line. If you're doing a gas line, bath fan, kitchen fan, it'd be 3250 each with a $65 minimum for the overall permit.
So if you're installing a furnace, it's $80. But then you have your gas line also that you need to address. And that's an additional fee on top of that $80. And that's where we appreciate that our fees are very...
Up to 140 something then, is that what you're saying? Or just...
145.
That's the way that they were charging.
Yep.
So our fees are, it's flat. It's a fixed fee. It's not per fixture here and add-on this here. And that's one of the, it's one of the ways that consultants and private companies can, I hate the term nickel and dime you, but that's what ultimately what's being, what's I feel is being, is happening, where our fees are flat. It's not going to go up for a furnace, no matter if you're running your gas line or you're not. It's, it's, that is the flat fee.
So that's really, if it was the old one, there was two, two permits they would have had to pull for that then probably.
It's, it would all be wrapped into one permit with multiple fees.
Multiple fees, one permit.
Correct. Same thing with plumbing.
Same thing when you said basement. If I was redoing my basement, you said there's a, pretty much a flat fee for the basement?
It's based on value, but it's a maximum fee.
Okay.
So if someone has a lot of square feet, that basement finished permit can get high real quick. And again, the, in order to have the fee commensurate with the service provided, no matter what, regardless of the value, because that's all done on the plan review. So there's a plan review and a permit fee on those. We wrap it all into one and it's a max fee of $500. And if the homeowner's also performing their own plumbing and mechanical, that's also wrapped in that maximum $500. Now, with the way the state, the state statute is, is if you hire a licensed or bonded contractor, they by statute have to pull their own, they have to pull their own permit. So we can't get away from that because then they are responsible for the service that they're providing to the resident. But our service, as far as plumbing and mechanical, it's not per fixture base, or we don't have additional fees besides those flat fees. That's, it will not exceed that amount. Where on here, you have the potential to compound those fees depending on all the work that's being done.
So this is a good learning experience for all of us. So if I'm doing a bathroom, so would I need a separate permit? Would I need a thing for the toilet, the sink and the shower? Would that be three different things? Or is that all covered underneath one?
It would be under one permit.
Yep.
There would be additional fees for every fixture that you're...
Okay, that's what you're saying. So that would be...
That's how your fees were.
So that would be three fees for that. But under yours, it's, it would be just
Flat.
flat fee of that.
So if you were doing a plumbing and you were doing three fixtures?
Yep, three fixtures. Let's just try to figure out one of these.
So your base fee, your base fee for plumbing for a residential is $50 base, plus $12 per fixture.
That's the 2020, or earlier.
The 2023, that, yes, that was your, that was the fees in 2023. So if you're doing, if you're doing a bathroom remodel and you have the toilet and tub or finishing off your basement, toilet, tub or shower, sink, drain, possibly, I'm trying to think of other, oh, I guess the shower head is one fixture, then the faucet for the tub would be another. I mean, you could potentially have, just say four, about the, is about probably the average? 12, 24, 36, 48. So that permit then jumps up to $98. And that's where the permit, it's only one permit, but you have multiple fees that are stacked on top of the base fee. Where our fee structure is flat. It's a flat fixed fee. And again, going back to the, what it costs to roll a truck or what it costs for our employees to go to a, a job site or a residence home and perform an inspection, whether they're putting in four fixtures or one fixture, our cost is the same. And that's where we really adhere to the statute requirements, that fees are commensurate with the service provided. It doesn't take that much longer to look at multiple fixtures in one bathroom.
Anything else?
And if you're really interested, I encourage you to come to the, over to the AMBO Building Official Institute from ICC and attend our fee class.
Well, part of it too is we look at the, you know, if we weren't in accordance with where we're supposed to be at the last one, now we're looking different. And it's just, there's a couple, there's a lot of moving parts now. It's not just apples to apples compared to that. Now, if it's where we're supposed to be paying for each one of those and there was different ones that were higher, like the, like, like a store, you got your loss leader product that they buy because you know you're going to make it up on something else. You know, now we, that's where we have to try to get it around our heads with that, plus the, the fee changes.
And I can, you can get in touch with Brandy after, if you, between now and when you discuss and ultimately decide at the February 6 meeting. If you have any additional questions, Brandy can reach out to me and we can provide information. And I would encourage you to look at those fees from Corcoran and Dayton. The judge did, put judgment and went in favor of Housing vs. Minnesota because the fees were not in line with the, with those, as far as commensurate for service.
All right. Well, if there's anything else, I, I thank you for the input. We learned a, you know, we're learning a lot and it's something we're, it's in front of us now. So we're trying to figure it out. And Brandy, maybe we can look, take a look at what you were talking about with the Corcoran one too.
Yep, I can do that.
And we can go from there. Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Get more information and go from there. Thank you.
All right. Next item up is the EDA discussion. This was started a little while back, trying to find, or bring the authority, which has the ability of taking loans of money and appropriating money. Seems like a lot of cities are going to bring that under the purview of the city council. So that's what we're looking at here. EDA right now is an authority that they want to, we want to change and bring underneath the city council itself and then in turn have a recommendation committee made up for the EDA that would make the recommendations to council at that point. Turn that over to you, Mayor. I know you did a little background work on that. If you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. We were looking at how the EDA was set up. Of course, being brand new as, as mayor, we were discussing different scenarios with the EDA. Ours is set up differently than any other city around us. Ours was a, was appointed and it was a six-year term. And they were authority. It wasn't a commission. So other cities, the, the actual council were voted in. They're the, they're the EDA. And we would log in, do the EDA business as far as any kind of bills and be able to do that, which it came to us before, after the authority anyways. So, and then we're looking at doing, going to a commission. So we're still going to take the, the, we, we know the value of our businesses. And I've talked to, I've talked to Joe. He's, we have two left that are on the EDA. We've had a change over the, this year. A lot of them have done it many years and retired. Mr. Schiffsky, Mr. Do ran the EDA and did a great job. And we had a lot of, a lot of great talent on that committee. They were, they've done it a long time. So they were, there were some changes. So we have Joe and we also have Terry Furlong are the two members that are left. So I asked Joe what his thoughts was about that and he thought about it. And he would, because with, with the authority, you need a treasurer, you need a vice chairman, chairman, you need a lot of different roles in that because of the authority. Because there's a, I think it's a $200,000 a year, I think is what it is for budget. So it becomes that. So that will take the burden off of, of the EDA. This is a commission. They would meet, probably, we're talking, meeting quarterly. If there's more, and more, we'd meet more often, projects. I talked to both Terry and Joe and we were looking at doing for existing businesses we have here in, in North St. Paul. We have great businesses. We want to make sure that we're appreciating them. So the EDA wants to focus on our existing businesses and what we can do 2024 here to help our businesses that are here in North St. Paul. And so they were in favor of the, the commission part of it and bringing the EDA back to the council. And they would be the actual official with the budget and stuff like that. So that's my update.
Soren had, had discussed with you and I was wondering if you could add anything to this discussion. Jack?
Sorry, Mayor, members of council. The city has a lot of flexibility with how to set up the EDA. And that's given to the discretion of the city council. There are some notice requirements. So I believe you have in your, some materials today of a, an example resolution and a couple of ordinances. We can't vote on those today because there has to be a, a publication of the notice of that first. But that's certainly something the city could do. Some cities can find it awkward to be, you know, there's different standards when you're acting as the EDA versus as the city council. And some, some cities find it awkward to wear the same hat or wear different hats and be evaluating the same project under, city council generally has a lot more sort of policy discretion. An EDA tends to be more, do you meet the criteria? But many cities also, you know, combine those two bodies and don't find it too hard to evaluate it sort of separately like that. It also, you know, creates advantages to have, you know, the, like you mentioned, filling all of the positions required by statute and, you know, sort of having the, the knowledge about the projects.
And just to be clear, I forgot to mention too, we're the HRA as well. So we log in as that. So it's nothing that's so, because we're the only ones that have the HRA, you know, as far as Ramsey County. So that is another one that falls underneath there. Plus, it's elected official. So if, it's going to be changing over in elections and not somebody, you know, that's appointed in six years. So I think it's kind of nice to have it with the commission. So thank you. That's my statement. Anybody else?
Those draft resolutions were emailed to council. So you guys have them in your email.
I have a question for Jack, if y'all don't mind. For the legality of changing it from an authority to a commission, what changes are there as far as public notice and if, if there was an EDA item that we thought needed to be moved quickly? My understanding is an authority can move quickly where sometimes a commission is a little bit tougher to move quickly. Is that an accurate statement?
Couple of points here. So the, the formal action is that, so right now, the city has an economic development authority. They would not be dissolving the economic development authority. It would be moving it from appointed commissioners to the city council. So that would be operating the same way that it is currently. Then it would be creating a new advisory body, the commission. And those would be appointed commissioners. That is an advisory body. So there can be, you know, added expertise from that. But if something comes directly to the EDA, you know, as constituted by city council, there's no, there would not necessarily be a requirement that it go through the commission first. So if there, you know, the commission can review and develop recommendations to pass on to EDA. Or if EDA wants to do something, you know, it still retains the full authority of the EDA.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Do you want to speak about, you were on the EDA as well, what your thoughts are?
Yeah. I've got, what, two and a half years, I think, of sitting on the EDA. The learning curve is a little higher than sitting on some of the other commissions within the city. I'm still learning. I am in favor of moving it to council. I don't have a problem with that. I, we got 21 years of knowledge walking out the door tonight when we shake their hands. I'm curious to know what this advisory commission of the other cities, who it's made up of? Are they paid positions? Who is going to do the heavy lifting when it comes to meeting with developers, doing those types of things, which is what some, what some of the individuals on the EDA did? Now it increases the burden to either staff or to council. The other concern that I have is the comment made that about $200,000 of, you know, what... what, what we bring in goes to the EDA, that pays for staff. So, all we're doing is shifting from bucket A to bucket B, by dissolving, dissolving the existing EDA and moving it into a council spot, doesn't save the city money.
No.
It just shifts, it just shifts the bucket that the money comes out of, so I wanted to clear that up too. So, my question goes back around, what's this authority look like? Do we hire a third party to, um, act on the city's behalf? Is that what other cities are doing? Are they, I, this is new to me, so I, I don't have the answers, and that's why I'm just curious.
Um, well, some of them, I, I didn't ask for pay, but a lot of them have the businesses, and I did talk to Joe, um, he's in charge of the Business Association, he has some people, good people that he wants to reach out to, but yeah, there is definitely going to have to be a, a figure out as far as, you know, is, but right now, we can't do business with the EDA because we have nobody, we don't have a, we don't have an EDA anymore. So the last two-
We had an ED.
Yeah, exactly, we had the last two meetings, we haven't been able to do it because we haven't had a quorum, so, um, if we, I, I think we would just bring that underneath the advisory of the council, and then we figure, you know, we, I'll continue to have conversations with Oakdale, Woodbury, everybody's, Maplewood, all their EDA is the council, and then they have advisories in different capacities.
Just, yeah, I'm, thanks, appreciate that, Mayor, I'm just curious-
Oh yeah, that's a great-
Just what the other cities look like.
Yep, and there's a lot of developing in those cities, in fact, uh, there's, we're going to get together, there's the five mayors, that have a really good group of mayors that we work with, so Lake Elmo, Oakdale, um, Woodbury, ourselves, and Maplewood, we get together every quarter as mayors, and we discuss, um, discuss things, and it's, it's a great learning experience for myself, especially being new, so, but, uh, they brought it underneath there, then they have the, the commissions, and some of them, they run a little bit differently, depends how much development there is. So that's what's kind of my thing when we talked about this, is, we, we have the last piece that we're talking about there, of real development, we have a couple little spots around, but, you know, spend this EDA as we're, as we're figuring out our, our new, our new roots here, and try to figure it out, as appreciating the business we got, and, and figure out how to help those guys, and get, get all organized again.
The city's been under a lot of development over the last eight years with the whole anchor block area with QuickTrip coming in, apartments coming in, um, condos going in over there, as well as the Sentinel building, and the new Lily building that's going to be constructed, I don't want the momentum to stop.
Correct.
And that's, that's my only concern, that's my big concern with two people walking out of here tonight.
Yeah.
Is that, um, I, they were, they were the heart and soul of the EDA.
Yep, and they were-
Unfortunately, they, they, they carried a lot of weight on their shoulders.
Yep, they did, and, um, and it got to the end, when it came to the, the car condo, there was some, there was some frustration they had with, with how we were doing it as the, as the city as well, so there were some things that were coming up, where we, we had to figure out, you know, and understand, you know, moving forward with the, with the body, and that's when, everybody, when we lost so many at the same time, it was just what do other ones do, so I looked into that, and I think we can build up another great one.
Okay.
And a lot of businesses, we have a lot of businesses around town here, they don't, and that's something too, where I asked the EDA, they don't have to be residents, as far as I can see, so we have a lot of great business owners in town here, so that, that, uh, that own of their businesses here, but, so, and Joe was, he's obviously more than happy to help the mayor and the, and the council, you know, we got a great business association, and we got people that want to help, so. And when I talked to Joe, the pressure was, he said, oh, to meet, and then to have the, the, the fine, and just the, the kind of things like that, he was, when I first asked, when I first asked him, he was kind of like, whoa, I don't know what you're talking about, then he thought about it, and when he discussed it, he said, I really would like to be able to, you know, with my expertise and everybody else, be able to help, but, you know, the business side of it is, is as far as the, um, the council itself. Good, thank you.
I think Terry will bring some good insight on that as well.
They all, Terry's going to be gone for four months, you know, he's, he's served our city for so long and so well, you know, he's going to be gone, so that he's, really, we have really one person that's, that's left, we have a couple that resigned, Tom Schiffsky, God bless him, uh, since I started as, as, on the planning commission, I started EDA, you know, on, as mayor, it's, you know, he's, he's done his time, and, you know, they were all great, and they stayed with, were all these big projects, but, you know, it's one of those things now, everybody can take a breath, the, the biggest, you know, all these big ones are done, and they've done so much work for our city, and, and they're, and they're tired, that's why I felt when I was talking to them, that they've done it, and Archie was a great, uh, was on our commission too, with those, everybody are on the, our authority, so, we had, we had a good, a good group, and we'll build it up again, and have another good group. We just have to do it a little bit differently, I think, so we can keep everything running.
Terry will bring some good insight, because he was on that EDA recommendation committee for Oakdale, so.
And he's willing to help, he says, I'm, whatever we want to do, I'm going forward, he says, I'm, I'm there for it. Of course, he's in, he's in, yeah, Texas, he gets home tomorrow. Maybe, he's smart, he's not.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
You good, everybody? Thanks, I appreciate everybody letting me, uh, do some discovery on this, and, uh, I said, it was, it was good to find out more information, thank you.
Nothing further, move on to other business?
You got it. I gotta go back up to the top. All right, any other business? Nope. Jason, Norby, none? Anybody? Okay, then we'll move on to adjournment, anybody want to say?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody, and we got, uh, almost 20 minutes to have a break.